I know there are some people that are still checking in, but we should probably give a boning, so I'm gonna call the town meeting to board. My name is Ted Kenny. I'm the chair of the Williston Select Board. And the first order of business tonight will be the scouts presenting the colors and leaving the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the road which stands, one nation under one, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Color guard dismissed. Next item on our agenda is reading of the in memoriam list. These are folks who have passed away, who've made contributions to the town and the town government. In no order of importance, I don't want anybody to think that. I'll begin. William Bill Skiff died February 2024. He had been on the Recreation Committee from 1980 to 1983, the Planning Commission in 2001, the Conservation Commission in 2002, and he had been a Justice in Peace 1994 through 2011. Sarah Francisco, Lake Iroquois Recreation District, 2018 to 2022, passed away March 2024. Kenneth Stone, Select Board member from 1986 to 1990, Sustainable Williston Committee, Social Service Organizations Funding Committee, passed away October 2024. David Eisham, Cemetery Commission 2005 to 2007, passed away in December 2024. Thanks to all of those people, and we remember their, we honor their memory. Next, read the annual report dedication, which any of you have a copy of it, is to Terry McCade, our Select Board Chair. We probably violated Robert's rules by having him be the person we dedicated him to with kind of a half-secret vote on the Select Board, so he wouldn't find out, but he found out anyway. You can't hide anything from Terry. So, reading, "This year's annual report is dedicated by the Williston Select Board to Terry McCade for his many years of service to the Williston community. Terry McCade has served the Williston community in several capacities and made a profound impact at the local and state levels. Terry served as a member of the Williston Select Board from 2002 to 2025, serving as his chair for 17 years. He represented Williston in the Vermont House of Representatives from 2008 to 2020, serving six terms on the House Institutions and Corrections Committee. Active in the community for decades, Terry has worked with the Cub, Boy and Girl Scouts, Little League, been a member of the Historic Society for 22 years, with 13 as its president, served nine years on the Regional Planning Commission, and over 30 years as either Deputy Health Officer or Health Officer in the Town of Williston. Terry is concluding his service on the Select Board at Town Meeting 2025. A steady and pragmatic voice on the Select Board for over two decades, Terry steered the Board through many complex and at times difficult policy conversations throughout his tenure. His dedication and unwavering commitment to community service has set a lasting example of professionalism and what it means to serve. Terry has been a role model for all of us, and he will be sorely missed. Couple of other things, Terry, the, we have also the Vermont Public Service Award presented to you, awarded by the Secretary of State, so I'm gonna hand that off to you. Going along with it is a letter from Representative Angelo Arsenault that I should have handed at the same time. And two other things, a, you didn't want a plaque, I don't know why. Plaques are great, but we did, we did get a gift certificate to Longhorn Steakhouse because we thought you'd like it, and we give a 1% sales tax on it. Honestly, the annual report dedication has been signed by every member of the Select Board. I would keep this, it's gonna be valuable, and it's probably gonna be a collector's item, it was a good book. Terry, if you wanted to say a few words?
Funny story about receiving award thing for the town meeting report, and I sent an email to Eric, the town manager, early February, saying, "We haven't discussed the town report dedication." And he gave me some answer, I guess, and I also mentioned to Ted, and I said, "Hey, Ted, you need to do this," well then they contested, I received reward. So I thank the, my colleagues on the Board for dedicating the report to me, and it's very much appreciated. So, and some of you probably watched the Academy Awards last night, and I think that this is the Oscar award for Williston, something. Also, thank you to all of the residents of Williston who elected me and re-elected me over the past 23 years, we certainly have enjoyed my service doing that. Williston has wonderful town employees who work every day, doing tasks both known and unknown for all of us. And I've had the pleasure to work with town managers Rick McGuire and Eric Wells, and town clerks Delatek Beckett and Sarah Mason, and all of our department heads and their staff do excellent work. I look at the hundreds of volunteers that have served on the various boards, commissions, and committees, and the Select Board has, over the last 23 years, voted to appoint at least 100 folks or more over that course of time, and they've all served with the best intent, interest of the town at heart. And I encourage you to apply for one or more of the various boards, commissions, or committees, because they're essential to move the town forward and to get in. My crystal ball says that tomorrow we'll be re-electing Ted Kenny to the Board and electing Elliot Beckett to the Select Board, and everything else is a little fuzzy on it, so I think we're there. And with that election, Williston, for the first time in history, will have women as majority on the Select Board. So I leave the Select Board tomorrow, confident that Williston will continue to be the shining light in both the county and the state. This is not a farewell, it's just a so.
Two other items on my agenda. One is to introduce the members of the Select Board immediately to my right, Vice Chair Greta D'Agostino, Jean Jensen, Terry for another couple of hours, and Mike Eisham, so our Select Board. Next, Article One of the Town Warning, a call for the motion, call a motion for the election of a Town Moderator. So do we have a motion to elect a moderator for our town meeting?
I'd like to nominate Chris Roy.
Is there a second? It's been seconded. Are there any other nominations? I'll call the vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Thank you. So Chris, come on up. Thank you.
Well, those of you who've been in town long enough might remember when I didn't have elections that were quite that boring, so I'll take them when I can get them here. And after, you know, it's a tough act to follow after all that we heard about and from Terry McCade, and I wanna add my voice to everybody's, thank you for the service that you've had to the community. I had a pleasure serving with you on the Select Board for eight years, and it was always, I think that the town was always in very good hands. And frankly, as we've seen in our county, a lot of issues tear communities apart. I've always been very proud of Williston's ability, despite having strong feelings about a lot of issues, being able to always pull together as a community and get things done. With that being said, Article Two of this evening's meeting reads, "Shall the voters authorize that current taxes be paid to the town treasurer in three equal installments with due dates of August 15, November 15, and February 15, as authorized by 32 VSA Section 4871? Is there a motion to pass the article?"
So moved.
And if you could state your name for the record?
Appleby.
Is there a second?
I have a minute.
And your name?
Linda Horace.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? I'll call the question, and all those in favor of Article Two, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, and Article Two is passed. Article Three reads, "Shall the voters of the Town of Williston accept the reports of the town officials as presented in the town report? In order to discuss this further, can we have a motion for approval of the article?" Rick, is there a second? Thank you. And at this point, I would hand it over to Eric for a brief presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you here this evening. Great crowd, thank you all for coming out. We'll have a, I'll do a brief overview of the town report here for Article Three, and then, once official town meeting concludes, I'll be back up here to go through the budget and the ERF article in the morning. So, as I mentioned, if you haven't grabbed a copy of the town report, we have copies outside the auditorium this evening, or you can also find it on the town website. I'll be hitting some highlights from each department in this presentation, and some things that occurred over the last year, but certainly review the U report in full for more information about our work and all our town departments. So, who probably remembers the solar eclipse from last year? It was last April 8. It was a, the skies darkened for just over three minutes during this full solar eclipse, and we found ourselves here in Williston in the Champlain Valley in the path of totality. Last time this occurred, I researched, in the Champlain Valley was in the year 1569. The next time is scheduled the year 2399, so I'm confident to say this was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in experience that day. So, a couple photos of our town staff during the eclipse that day, preparing for the eclipse. It was a busy day in our region, I'm sure I'll remember that, it all went well, had a number of visitors that came to visit the region Board for that event. So I wanna share a couple of new pieces of equipment to our town fleet that we added the last year. We were first, electric mower joined our fleet, that's the green mower there on the left. We, and we've also recently added a second one we purchased for our Parks Department. We also have on the right, it's an electric field lining robot, so when you're out there on the Village Community Park, we used to line these fields, two staff members would need to manually measure them, state them out, and then roll them with a paint roller. Staff love this new innovation, it's a very efficient member of our town staff, it doesn't ask for a whole lot, just to get recharged when it needs a battery recharge, so I know our Parks Department is really, that's a great addition to our fleet here. And then finally, we added our first electric vehicle charging station last year at the Village Community Park as well, and these three innovations were funded through grant money or pandemic aid relief funds that the town received. Also share, we added another piece of equipment to our Fire Department, the replacement of Utility One on its equipment replacement schedule. This piece of equipment provides response capabilities, including towing our department's UTV for off-road emergencies, and it's able to store variety of fire and EMS equipment for various response needs. So now I'll kinda go through each department with a few highlights from the last year. Start with our Williston Police Department, it was another busy year for Williston PD, with responses nearly 8,000 calls, increase of about 400 calls in the last year. The department had its 18th sworn officer position approved in our current budget, it's in the process of putting an officer into detective role that we discussed at town meeting last year. There were just under 1,200 offenses were reported, and the department made 737 arrests, and also responded to 399 motor vehicle crashes. Our Williston Fire Department celebrated 75 years of service last fall. Fire Department responded to nearly 2,600 calls, that is an increase of about 250 from the prior year. Two-thirds of our calls are medical, we had 1,668 medical calls in the last year, that was a 4% increase, and about 600 of those incidents overlap, so just under 25% of the time, we have two incidents occurring for our response from our Fire Department. Department also logged over 3,600 hours of training, this included a federal grant-funded program to train our staff on national standards for apparatus driver and operator for our engines and ladder truck. Our Public Works Department maintains 74 miles of public streets, our water system has nearly 8,300 users with a demand of nearly 720,000 gallons of water per day, our wastewater system has just over 7,000 users with daily flows to the treatment plant in Essex Junction, that we own about a third of its capacity, of about 711,000 gallons per day. A few project highlights from Public Works over the last year, repainting the public street sections, culvert replacement and ditch cleaning, gravel road drainage improvements, address water line breaks as they occur, North Williston Road sewer pump station upgrades. This winter operations ongoing right now, especially this winter, we've had a lot of snow and ice for management out there. Big thanks to our crew for all their hard work. And our plow trucks were named this year by our local students, so I've got a photo of one of our trucks, Scoop Dog, who's out there scooping up the snow around town. If you see the signs on our trucks, they're all named by our students, and thanks for them for taking part in that, it's a fun thing to do. Recreation and Parks Department, averaged 85 campers per week at rec camps last summer. Our rec zone indoor space of about 2,000 square feet on Harvest Lane celebrated its one-year anniversary. We had 72 volunteers assist with programs. Our seasonal programs include the ski and ride program, it's going on now, soccer and basketball. We had some parks projects completed, they included the Brennan Picnic Shelter and the basketball court resurface at the Village Park. Our Planning and Zoning Department's been very busy with working on the new town plan. The Williston 2050 community outreach occurred last year, and this work for the town plan's gonna have public hearings for the Planning Commission and the Select Board in the coming months, so please pay attention to that as the Planning Commission's working to draft that language now. The town launched a housing committee, which is staffed by our planning department. We had 52 new dwelling units completed in town, and 191 permits approved in the department, so Matt's been, Matt's been busy signing permits, I was gonna say. And then with our town administration, we had a clean audit report, thanks to all the hard work in our finance department, and we collected just $44.5 million in property taxes, the town and education taxes combined, all came through our Treasurer's Office. Just under 6,200 pages recorded at the clerk's office, about 7,000 people vote in last November's general election, we have a grand list of $2.168 billion, that was a 0.1% increase over the prior year. So our Dorothy Alling Memorial Library, we had, celebrating the retirement of Director Jane Kearns last December, big thanks to Jane for her over five years of service as Director. Over 60,000 visitors came to the library, 134,000 items were circulated, library had 760 program sessions and over 11,000 attendees. Now, that'll segue into some work that's ongoing for the library and the Village. The Village Five and C Project that we're, that the town is working on is a renovation of the existing 9,500-square-foot library, and an 11,500-square-foot addition to address the needs of today and the future. The schematic design for the facility was recently completed and transferred by the trustees to the Select Board for ongoing discussion. The proposed scope of the project includes elements to activate the town green for more use, including accessible pathways, new performance space, features and added seating, and refreshed vegetation. So this design was transmitted to the Select Board last month, it's ended a three-year process to get us to this point. Stay tuned for next steps and a community event this spring to showcase the design proposal. Select Board will be discussing the project further in the coming months. So a couple of the renderings of the project, so we'll look at the, at the design for the new entrance and the addition. This is looking eastward from Green, the addition would be in the back space. I'd just say the town worked with Black River Design Architects based in Montpelier for the design work, and a steering committee of community volunteers helped shape the project over the past year. This is finally looking at Route 2 down library. So you can, if you visit the town website or library website, you can see the full schematic design plans, including the site plan and the layout for the villa renovation and the addition. So stay tuned for this exciting project that will be an ongoing discussion for the town. So I also wanna take a moment to recognize our outstanding town staff, they provide community services each day in many ways to support Williston. We're fortunate to have such a dedicated and talented group of staff, I'll highlight a few milestones from the past year, like to recognize service milestones for our staff members. So celebrating five years of service, Buildings and Grounds Lead Andrew Woobie, firefighter Corey Hill, our Assistant Public Works Director Christine Doherty, police officer Ethan Favreau, water and sewer technician Gay Atherton, firefighter Chris Poner, and our Finance Director Shirley Goodell-Lackey. Celebrating 10 years of service to the town, was Recreation and Parks Director Todd Goodman, and our Outreach Librarian Sarah Hibler. 15 years of service, our Public Works Director Bruce Bor. And then I wanna recognize a recently retired Assistant Assessor Dick Ransom, who retired last summer, with 21 years of service to the town. I also wanna take a moment to thank and recognize our dozens of town volunteers. As Terry said in his remarks, they're critical to our local government, they spend hundreds of hours meeting and in service to Williston each year. We have some local open positions as well, I've got it on the screen, if you're interested in volunteering for the town, we certainly need some folks who are interested to fill these important roles, you can reach out to the town manager's office or look on the town website as well to get more information. So if you'd join me in a round of applause, just to recognize the work of our town staff. So this will conclude my report, I will be back up here to talk about the budget, but I will turn it back to our moderator. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Is there any further discussion regarding the article relating to accepting the reports of the town officials that are included in the town report that you previewed here? Hearing none, the motion is ready to be called, and the motion is, "Shall the voters of the Town of Williston accept the reports of the town officials as presented in the town report?" All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? The ayes have it, Article Three is passed. Article Four reads, "To transact any other business to be brought before said meeting." Is there any further business to be taken up at this time? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion, oh yes?
We actually, this is from our ring call, is this the time when we're going to call or is there another public comment?
Oh, with respect to the budget discussion, there's gonna be an entire informational presentation and give and take regarding all of that at that time, so there'll be lots of opportunity to provide input at that time. Is it with respect to a specific thing or a general item, or what's the?
It's a town program service that also will be included in the project, but I wanted to bring up some questions about the future of the issue.
Yeah, I think that that would be most appropriate during the session that's coming up, that frankly is gonna get into the meat of programs and budgets. Any other items? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn until tomorrow, when there will be votes upon Australian ballot with respect to the remaining articles? Is there a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move a second to adjourn until tomorrow's Australian voting? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Thank you very much, people.
All right, I am back, I guess, everyone. So we'll get in next now for a preview of the items by Australian ballot to be considered tomorrow, and start with the town budget proposal. So to start out, we're talking about our general fund budget proposal, just to kind of set in context, the town budgets the spending and funding plan to deliver core municipal services to the community from your local government. The expense side of the budget covers the cost for allied services, the revenue side is how to pay for the services to balance the budget. This is the best revenue and spending model with the information available as the town works to bring this to you, the voters, each March. We're making a plan now for a budget year that ends in June of 2026. So the cost for services, the proposed budget is $15.94 million for fiscal year 2026, that's an increase of just under $900,000 from our current fiscal year, fiscal year 2025. Percentage-wise, it's a 5.97% increase to the general fund budget. The Select Board's objective in developing this budget was to look at a baseline increase to reflect the cost to continue the current level of service, that's with the supports required that was under 5%, and then looking to add service enhancements to the baseline to continue to advance public safety priorities. In developing the budget, any possible spending reductions were reviewed and applied. So I'll talk about the story behind the budget. That baseline budget I mentioned was 4.6%. The overall driver of the baseline budget increase are payroll and benefit costs for personnel. This baseline increase also includes the addition of a human resources manager position to work in the town manager's office. A few points about this position, the HR manager position would be part of our leadership team in the manager's office, focused on all aspects of supporting and managing staff, includes benefits administration and compliance requirements. The town has an over 100 employee workforce. A 2023 organizational analysis recommended the addition of this position as a priority for the town administration. HR items always rise to the top operationally for the town. The current system in place of HR duties shared among multiple staff members creates challenges and has limited capacity without a sole professional to be the lead on all things HR related. Position's also in addition to the town's rest management team, as employment practices are dynamic and require continued long training oversight. From there, a 1.37% increase to the budget is in addition to this baseline increase, and this covers public safety service enhancements, I'll get into on the next slide. And that gets us to an overall 5.97% increase in the operating budget proposal for the next fiscal year. So the service enhancements I mentioned from the So the service enhancements I, I mentioned from the baseline budget versus adding a nineteenth sworn police officer. This would increase the size of our patrol division to twelve officers, the four sergeants. The target in personnel for this division from a 2023 analysis study commissioned by former Colonel Jim Baker of the state police, who assisted us with this, was look at twenty personnel in patrol division in his analysis. The chief lieutenant and the detective position in the department ran out the current sworn law enforcement roster. This budget also proposes adding a social worker position with a start date midway through the year in a full-time role. We anticipate an embedded model contracting with outside agency for this position. This position will address community well-being and provide essential support services. This follows national models and best practices from our own policing. The addition of a social worker provides adequate capacity to our current community outreach model that we partner with the Howards Center on. And working with individuals does not always require a uniformed officer response. In addition, professional mental health service assistance on calls is a critical tool for creating positive outcomes for all. This position was also identified in the 2023 department study that I mentioned earlier. Continuing to implement staffing needs was a critical goal for the select board in developing this budget for your consideration. So expenses by department, this breakdown on the screen shows just overall the high level. Our public safety is fifty percent of expenses, public works another sixteen percent. Two-thirds of our municipal budget delivers those core services to the community. As I mentioned, our public safety departments had a, have a very active call volume. Nearly twenty-six hundred calls for fire EMS in 2024, nearly eight thousand police calls last year. Fifty percent of our EMS patients in 2024 were over the age of sixty. We staff public safety in Williston twenty-four-seven. It's a level of service not offered by all communities. Providing that service has a significant cost to it. It allows us to always have professional staff on duty, day and night, to respond to the call. So I recognize it's a little small up here, but we also have it online. I'll, I'll walk through this. Another way to look at the expenses is by budget object. So if you look at the large blue slice of the pie and the, and the orange slice, that's covering payroll and benefits and, and training are the largest cost center on the expense side of the budget. Again, this is about two-thirds of the budget and it's about ten point six million dollars. Ninety-two percent of the overall budget increase covers wages and benefits costs of the town, about eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Of that, about three hundred thousand dollars is from the, the positions I, I mentioned for service enhancements. Hundred and twenty-five thousand is from increased cost to provide an employer-sponsored health insurance. The town changed its carrier to lower this number. Originally, it was going to be two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase for health insurance costs. And we were able to decrease that by, by looking at our care and our plan offerings. Looking at other object areas of the budget, contracted services are at eight perc, make up eight percent and then debt service at six percent. Contracted services include things like information technology, legal, the town's allocation towards Green Mountain Transit Regional Transportation Services. Other increases, just in general in the budget, property casualty insurance and supplies and materials driven by ongoing inflation. So that's the expense side. So the town always delivers a balanced budget. So how did the town balance this budget in the proposal? We'll take a look at the revenue. So there's a number of ways that the town uses revenues to balance the budget. One is user fees. These include two hundred thousand dollars budget for zoning permits, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars for ambulance revenue, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for recreation programs. Town receives a number of grants. These include highway local aid dollars from the state based on highway mileage. Every town the state receives that's about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand in revenue there. Town receives host town fees from the Chitting-Sullivan Waste District in Casella, about three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Our local option sales tax is projected to bring in four point two million dollars in FY26. Property taxes at eight point four million. And finally, to balance the budget, select boards included the use of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the fund balance to reduce taxes. So looking at that visually, our revenue sources, the property tax revenue is about fifty-four percent. Local option tax about twenty-six percent. And the remaining twenty percent are the revenue types that many I highlighted on the prior slide. So looking at that in terms of property taxes with eight point four million dollars to raise in property taxes, the estimated tax rate increase is just under three and a half cents per hundred dollars of assessed property value. That would increase our current rate to an estimated thirty-nine cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. The final tax rate is set in June after the grand list is finalized. The increased rate estimates about thirty-five dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value. Looking at the median assessed home in Williston, which is three hundred thousand dollars. That increase is estimated at just over a hundred dollars in new taxes for the year, or about eight dollars and sixty cents per month. Just an overall breakdown of property taxes. On a Wilson property tax bill, about eighty-five percent are education taxes that go into state education fund. About fifteen percent are municipal taxes to fund the town budget we're talking about today. And the town collects all taxes per state statute. Education taxes collected are sent to Montpelier by our treasurer's office. So looking at our grand list impact. The grand list is the total value of all property in town. As I mentioned earlier, it's just over two point one billion dollars. Our assessor estimates a net increase of about a half a percent next year. That's about ten point eight million dollars in grand list growth. This net increase is affected by both new construction and changes in valuation for existing property. The grand list growth will raise about forty-two thousand dollars in new tax revenue based on the estimated tax rate that we're projecting this evening. Let's look kind of how our Williston tax rate compares to other towns in Chitting County. This is looking at towns that offer full municipal services, police, fire, EMS, public works. And Williston has a, has the lowest tax rate in Chitting County for any full-service municipality. And this really directly correlates with our local option sales tax. The four point two million dollars of this revenue projected to collect offsets our tax rate by nineteen cents. So for the median homeowner, this saves nearly six hundred dollars annually in property taxes. Because don't even raise that revenue in property taxes, we have the local option tax assist with that. I'll jump into Article Six and then open it up for questions here. So this is the separate tax levy. Shall a tax of one-half of one cent be assessed on the grand list with the proceeds? Estimated to be a hundred and ten thousand dollars to be deposited into the town's environmental reserve fund for the purpose of permanent preservation and protection of open space area and public lands within the town of Williston. So a little history, the ERF was established in nineteen ninety to preserve habitat, recreation areas that are real character and views in town. It's used to purchase land directly, to purchase easements to allow public access on permanent trails, and to provide financial assistance for property owners now to gain the legal process of permanently conserving that land. Over three thousand acres have been conserved since the ERF was established. That's about sixteen percent of the area of the town. Long-term goal for the town is to have thirty percent of this land area conserved. Past projects, this fund has been utilized to fund in whole or in part, including Catamount Community Forest, Mud Pond Country Park, the conservation area, and the Suckerbrook Trail. There's currently a balance of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the ERF reserve. With tight budgets in recent years, this annual allocation from the town's general fund has been reduced over the past several years to, to fund this reserve. And this year, the select board decided to ask the voters in Article Six on the morning whether the town should raise a separate half-cent tax on the grand list to fund the ERF. If approved, is estimated to raise a hundred and ten thousand dollars in FY26. The separate tax levy is a one-time for FY26. Consider this, to continue this practice in the future, it would need to be approved by the voters annually. The half-cent tax is estimated to be about five dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value. And that cost for a median assessed homeowner, that three hundred thousand dollar assessment, is estimated to be an added fifteen dollars in property taxes for the year. So important to note that it's often unpredictable when property owners will be motivated to consider conservation options. Our town plan calls for an interconnected network of trails, open spaces, wildlife trap, wildlife travel corridors and habitats. The town doesn't know which piece of the puzzle they'll be able to put in place at any given time. ERF allows the town to strategically capitalize on these opportunities as they arise for the town. And the cost of land conservation and acquisition continues to increase. And hence, future planning is critical to build the ERF reserve over time. Finally, just reviewing the schedule. You are here, town meeting, public information meeting, and we're, and we're moving along with this evening. Voting by Australian ballot, if you haven't voted early, is tomorrow from seven AM to seven PM at the Armory. If you have a ballot already, you need to make sure you return it by seven PM to the Armory before it to be counted in, in this town meeting election. So you're there, we'll open it up for questions. If you do have questions, we have a, a microphone at the front here, which should just be helpful for our, our recording. And we'll open it up there, so just come over. Oh, try looking it down.
Test. Stand by. All right, so I'm Rob Maholik and a long-time Williston resident. And I'm, I'm actually here as a Williston resident, but also as the chair of the Community Justice Center in Williston. And I don't know how many people in the town know that we have a Community Justice Center. It's one of four in Chitting County. And that, under Act one eighty, the models for community justice centers is changing. So I have a couple of questions, but if anybody wants to know what the Community Justice Center does, it's on page forty-eight of the annual report, good job. There's almost thirteen hundred volunteer hours of people from our town and the service towns that work on restorative justice contracts, which keeps people out of the court system and out of jail. And just by way of comparison, what we figured out is we had two hundred and twenty-eight cases resolved last year. But we also, the Community Justice Center, had a hundred and seventy-three referrals for human needs, navigation services that people needed, such as food, housing, and, you know, intervention for mental health crises. That's a four hundred and one total cases. If we take the budget of what it costs to run the center, that's about five hundred and seventy-one dollars per case. You may not know, but to incarcerate somebody in Vermont, it costs ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars. So this is an incredibly cost-effective program, which also is a program that creates repair within the community versus punishment. Repair or punishment, which means the responsible parties create a contract of repair, which they deliver. The question I have tonight is that if funding for the program doesn't come through, which is now moved over to the Attorney General's Office for the coming fiscal year, that means on July first of this year, we won't have enough funding to keep this program going. So the question is, what do we do if we don't get the funding from the state? And then if we do get the funding, what happens next year when the model goes to the center will be only in Burlington for Chitting County, which means we lose the Williston Center as of July first of 2026? So that's, those are the questions I have.
No, I can, I can take that, thanks, Rob. So, you know, certainly funding for, this has been a great program the town has been able to offer for many years. And the funding is, is tied to state budget and grant allocation. About seventy-five percent of the program is funded through state grant funds. Certainly, we have to see where the state budget lands, just for exactly how that lines up for next year. But certainly, as the town prepares in collaboration with our, with our other centers in South Burlington and Essex, to work with Burlington as a partner with a new model that, that's going to be rolled out, we need to understand where that funding lands and to help us continue to provide services. So a lot of this is tied to state funding as well for the coming fiscal year. But beyond that, you know, we have stakeholder group that's going to continue dialogue and working on a transition plan with, with rolling it into the City of Burlington services. And it's been a lot of great work done by a number of stakeholders looking at this over the past several months. Where, where the model is, is looking at at a high level, still have embedded practitioners in each municipality. So we don't want to lose that local connection and that local work on a day-to-day basis. So this is, you know, this model is, is just starting these high-level conversations. It's another fifteen months before this transition takes place. So there'll be a lot of opportunity to engage, to be thinking about that process overall. But it's important that myself and the other town managers in, in these, in the communities in Chitting County to maintain those local connections as part of this, looking to, to strengthen a, a good program that, that exists. That's, that's all. There's not a lot of other specifics beyond that at this point, but it's going to be work that, that is ongoing. Yeah, so I, I think we'll have to explore what those options look like. I think we'll have to look at other, other partners and maybe talk with the City of Burlington about what that looks like in the short term. But we, we'll be addressing that as, as it comes up and just evaluating it in the coming months. Yeah, and we, we turn to the microphone, it's right there in the middle.
I'm, I'm Carl Fowler. This is rather a follow-on question, but do we have any funded programs or are we anticipating any funded programs that could be impacted by the DOGE activity in Washington? Particularly by freezing grants or by reversing previously authorized spending? Are we in any jeopardy with this?
No, we, we took a look at this over the last couple of weeks and we don't have any direct programmatic impact to, to kind of federal funding for a day-to-day operational basis.
Good, thank you.
With no funding guarantee for the employees of the Community Justice Center, that puts them in a unprofessional position. And I think that's in the air. I, I, I think that the town needs to come forward and have something in place now. And you can't run an organization like that.
Yeah, certainly, it's, it's an ongoing funding discussion. I'm, I'm not in a position to speak to, you know, the individual town staff at that end.
That's unfortunate.
Other questions?
So my question relates to the Environmental Reserve Fund. First of all, I'm trying to understand exactly how much money was set aside for the current fiscal year. So I see thirty thousand, was it? Well, there's a, a transfer in from reserves of thirty thousand and there's an expenditure of forty thousand. So is that seventy thousand total?
Seventy total, yeah.
So that's being taken out of the budget for next fiscal year.
Yep, the, part from the general fund and part from the, from the fund balance.
So then, I guess my question is why are we being asked to fund it a different way than has been done traditionally out of the operating budget?
Might turn that to a member of the select board.
Make sure I don't get too much feedback. I, I can answer that in a general way. It's the, the, we've, we've been, quite frankly, we've been underfunding the Environmental Reserve Fund. We've had very tight budgets. We've had one economic issue after another, national economic issues. The most recent being inflation and one right now consistent, continuing to be inflation, which drives up costs for everything, but mainly the wages that we have to pay and then the health insurance costs that we have to cover. So this, in a philosophical way, was a way to get voters to have the power to decide whether or not we're going to give a boost to the Environmental Reserve Fund, to fund it appropriately and to make up for the lack of funding that we've been forced to decide on over the last couple of years. It's, you're, you're It's, you're, if you're asking, why isn't the Select Board making that decision directly? It still does with all the other budget issues. That's a legitimate point. And I struggle with that myself, going back and forth a little bit. But I, for myself, people can speak to their own decision-making process, perfectly myself. I finally, I decided that it's an important enough issue that I'm hoping the voters do pass it. And that if we put it in the budget, quite frankly, it may, it may not pass. And then that's one of the terrible issues with a budget going down, is that you don't, you don't know what the voters, which part of the budget they didn't like. They didn't like the property tax rate. And I can almost always guess that correct. But, you know, in terms of looking at what do we cut, that's, that's kind of a shooting an arrow in the dark sometimes in terms of what public sentiment is. So this was in some way, in some way, to give the decision to the voters and see if this is something that they want to have.
Other questions?
Hi, I'm Marcy Cass, and I have a question about the CJC and how the town, the procedures. First, I want to say that, that's my husband over there walking with a cane. And I want to thank the police department and the emergency people because he was in a car accident. And it was, we're really grateful that, that the emergency response worked as well as it did for my family. So I have a little anecdotal story, which brings up a question for me, which is, so I'm a graphic designer, and I worked with Officer Travis Trybalski, maybe 10 years ago, on the Chowder Challenge. He contacted me and I did logo. And so he was sort of like my pal. And I went into him, I don't know, five years ago, working at Home Depot. And I was like, wow, what are you doing here? And he said that he, he was frustrated with, my understanding was the CJC, that the police department works really hard to make arrests, and then a lot of the cases get turned over to the CJC, and the people are just like, let go. And it was very frustrating for him. Now, my husband is, is a volunteer with the CJC, and my understanding is that it's like an amazing resource, an amazing kind of community wraparound that we have for the very hard problem of what to do for and with people who break laws. And how it's, the CJC is a way of the community kind of taking care of its own and dealing with problems ourselves. And so when he said that, I thought, wow, I don't think he knows anything about the CJC. And so my question would be, does the police department have a sense of really what they do? Have they ever like sat in on any sessions so they can really understand what's going on? And also, how do the referrals happen? And do police make referrals? And is that going to be changing now with Burlington? I also wonder, with the referral process going to Burlington, that's my understanding, is that going to, is that going to harm the quality of the work?
Question. No, I'd say the overall objective is not to, not to harm the quality of work at all. It's to strengthen it. So we're really at the early stages of this planning. So I don't have specific answers operationally to provide right now, but I know myself and my fellow town managers in Essex and South Burlington will be, will be working with the Mayor's Office in Burlington at an administrative level, that we want to bring in our staff and volunteers to help in that design process. It's going to take a little while to work on what that looks like exactly. But we're at, we're at an early, early stage now. So I don't have the specifics of the nuts and bolts, but you know, the overall objective is to strengthen and look at collaboration. And this is a statewide effort through Accra.
And what about the interfacing with the police department?
Yeah, so we have, we have work, our lieutenant supervises it directly, of course, with our chief. We have ongoing work for direct referrals in the departments. We have coordination amongst our officers and sergeants. And we recently shared some success stories on the CJC too with all our officers in the last week. So it's, it's ongoing, and it's work, and our staff is all, all working towards it.
Yeah, because my understanding is that the case referrals have dropped recently, and my husband is like, not doing much work. And I just wonder how, why that happened.
Yeah, you know, I think there's a lot of different things at play. Depends on what's going on at a given time, but we certainly have data and we can, we can share it if anyone's interested.
Thank you.
I'm Tess Swett. I'm wondering if, I have this equation, are we due or overdue for property tax assessments? Are our property taxes, are our home values to be assessed? Are we overdue with that? So do we have time on that?
Yeah, good questions. The last reappraisal took place in 2016 and 2017. The state's metric for ordering reappraisal used to be the CLA, the Common Level of Appraisal. They changed that to the coefficient of this person, which is a measure of market value amongst properties. So it used to be if your CLA dropped below 85%, you had a reappraisal order. And about in '21 or '22, I think every town in the state got an reappraisal order due to, due to the real estate market. So from there, the COD metric that's adopted now is if your COD is over 20, then it needs to be ordered reappraisal. Ours is about 12 right now. But also, the State of Vermont is looking to recalibrate reappraisals on a six-year rolling basis for all municipalities. So as, I spoke to our assessor about this on Friday. It looks like Williston will be in fight at 2029 or so reappraisal cycle, so it's a couple of years to come. The challenge here is ongoing need for reappraisal and capacity for reapraisals to occur. So we'd be likely starting that work in a few years and starting to procure a contractor for that work.
Hopefully, I won't make feedback. Reece, my question, Eric and Select Board, is what, it seems like at a minimum, it's common sense that we can't expect the CJC to function for the full year when only guaranteed funding for half the year, for staff reasons. So my question is, what can we expect the Select Board and the Manager's Office to be doing, or considering doing as the year progresses to ensure that we don't get two years later in a year and then there's no funding at that point? There's no options for us to do. Are there any mechanisms to consider adjusting funding for different programs to allow the CJC to have a backup plan for funding at least for this disposal? Thank you.
So currently in FY '25, funding is full for June. For FY '26, as it's been looked at, the town's allocation for the local share and the initial proposal at the state level would maintain our current level of funding. So we won't know that state share until the state budget is finalized. But at that point, we need to take a look and see what's, what really needs and what the gaps, if the grant is not as anticipated, or if there's a severe decrease in grant funding at that level. So we're really looking ahead to see where the state budget is.
I'm just looking. Thank you all for your work. I'm just wondering, with the new model for the CJC, where there will be a hub in Burlington, and we will no longer have our well-built community program right here in Williston, if the Select Board and the town manager have considered the implications of that in terms of the services that the CJC provides that are above and beyond the preparative boards? And what I'm talking about there are the 10:30 PM phone calls from one of our neighbors who have just become unhoused. The calls from our neighbors who are experiencing mental health challenges. The calls from our neighbors in Williston that don't have heat. The support and the support that the CJC provides to our police officers when they come upon a situation that they don't have the training or the knowledge of the resources to handle, they will call the CJC. I'm just wondering if there's awareness of those pieces of what the CJC does, and if that was part of, that has been part of the conversation.
Yeah, so the new model that's going to be stood up, this was a decision that was made about a week ago or so. So we're just looking at what the planning is going to take place there. We're going to be the partner and engaged in making sure these services are maintained and strengthened moving forward. Thing is, looking at all these elements that are, that are provided and understanding how, how that collaboration can take place moving forward. The town is a service provider, you know, is looking to make investments in law enforcement. We work with our Howard Center outreach team already. We've done that for about six years. Looking to bring on an embedded social worker model as well, our elements to look at that service provision at a local level. But I think at a regional scale, it's something we all have to be looking at with the other towns, and it's just, it's too early for me to comment on the nuts and bolts just yet.
Have those pieces been part of your conversation, one of my questions?
Yeah, as we looked at this over the last nine months, we've had services provided.
Hello, my name is Dan Blumhauer. We own two parcels in Williston. The first one, when we decided to concur our developer rights, we were awarded through Vermont Housing Conservation Board and others about $200,000, which went to my uncle who we were purchasing property from. The second piece, when I went to think about getting rid of the conservation rights, we developed, donating them to some other service, we were asked we'd have to pay $25,000. So instead of giving, getting money to give to the person we were buying it from this last time, we were having to expend money of our own to do something with a conservation easement. And I just wanted to say that so that you have a sense of how things can change. So when you're looking at the environmental reserve fund and wondering why these numbers can be changing, it's because the world has changed and we all have to move along with it. So I just want to say, I encourage everybody to do what you can to support the environmental reserve fund. Second of all, I was just interested in noting, you said there's going to be a new social worker, another policeman, and a human service, right? There's three different positions that are opening?
Yeah, human resources manager.
Okay. So in that human resources manager, that position has been taken care of in the past by, as a part-time portion of some other employees' jobs, right?
Yeah, it's really spread amongst four employees, and it's, it's kind of just being able to handle, you know, at the minimum day-to-day needs. But the town's in a position where it needs a full-time professional for it to fill that role.
So that's 25% of each of their jobs at this point. What would those people be doing with that extra time? No, that's not the way it works.
I would say probably not.
Okay. Please explain.
Probably, I don't know what percentage of the time that. I'm not the expert. I would say my understanding is it's not 25% of full-time time. We're not doing a full-time human resource professional job. We're doing maybe a part of what a professional would do.
Okay. It's just, wait, when I looked at the math, that's what all the pressure, I just wanted to make sure that was clear in my head. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I'll say the employees carrying a piece of that. It's, they have a very high work demand, and it's, you know, it's on top of that. And it's something that always has to take priority. So there's, there's other things that need to get taken care of as the town continues to grow. So focusing our resources to one professional position is the.
So what would, what would those people be doing with the, the time that they have been putting into human resources?
I'll say they're, they're putting over well worse a week's work of worth, sorry, I got tongue tied there. Well over a 40-hour week as it is right now. So it's helping to relieve that a bit and also to still keep this intention, other projects in the Manager's Office and Finance Office.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add, and I think the piece Eric, as our town manager, is not adding in his, Eric spends a significant portion of his time doing HR functions, as well as Shirley Gettlelacki, our finance director for the town. And the other two people are.
Assistant Town Manager and our people.
Yes. And so they are spending, as Eric said, Eric and Shirley spend well over 40 hours a week. I couldn't even give you an estimate, but they are here many nights, you know, at 9:00 PM, at well beyond work hours. So it wouldn't be that they wouldn't be working a 40-hour week. It'd be more likely they might be working a 50-hour week now, so.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. In the back.
Good evening. My name is Roberta Tracy. Obviously, I live here in town. And I would like to thank the Select Board and all the employees of Williston who've worked so hard to keep our town functioning smoothly. I, I always marvel at that. My concerns are, after the increase in spending last year, my finances were considerably strained. And I can tell you with certainty that my income this year will not be rising 5.9%. Now, I think that I'm not alone when I say that I am deeply concerned about the changes that are taking place in Washington DC. And what we're hearing about how these changes will begin affecting the incomes of people like myself who are retired and those on Medicaid. People are already losing their jobs. These are circumstances that at this time are beyond our control, except at the ballot box. And I'm reading about what we deserve as a community and what we need as a community. And I'm thinking, what is it that we can do with as a community, given the uncertainties of potentially catastrophic proportion that we are going to face over the next year? It's not that I don't want to spend this money. It's first that I don't have it. And secondly, I think over the next six months, I will have much less. So thank you for your hard work. At the time this budget was put together, we were living in a different time. The last two months, we face, have faced an incredible change in this country. And I'm deeply troubled by that. And I'm deeply troubled that many here will be affected significantly in their financial circumstances. And I'm just talking about caution.
Thank you. Any other questions from those? All right, I think we'll, we'll end our public information hearing there. I'll have the Chair adjourn us, but the school district is here. They'll, they'll get set up after a brief break to give an overview of their budget presentation. We'll get that next month. Turn to the Chair. We'll get that next, well, turn to the Chair.
So the only magic word I have to say is a word, adjourn. I do want to say thank you, everybody, for coming out. Thank you for your input. Please do remember to vote tomorrow, if you haven't voted already, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. This is part of our, how we build community and how we experience community. So thank you for everybody for being here, and we are adjourned.